We have a good organization and money. He probably wondered why we did ask him to come back on the council.
I know you're talking about. And that's why it was three years before we asked someone else.
I've heard that. I wasn't here when he did that, but I've heard that. He was always a pocket. Yeah, he's my brother's age. He was born in fifty.
I call this meeting of the only city council October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Please rise and say the pledge allegiance and remain standing as the Reverend Steve Weyers is our opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To God and heaven, thank you for your grace, your goodness, your love, your mercy. Thank you for this beautiful day for our community and its leadership with us this evening. Grant wisdom and guidance to the great Jesus.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Miller?
Present.
Councilman Farenbacher?
Here.
Councilwoman Ikorst?
Present.
Councilman Iyer?
Present.
Mayor Lambert?
Here. First item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Michael Lamb. Michael Lamb not seeing any other public comments or presentations. Any other public comments or presentations? Moving on, next item on the agenda is presentation of the consent agenda, which includes to approve minutes of the council meeting on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, and a resolution to rescind resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty, which authorize a tourism grant application program. Are any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, under presentation of ordinances, resolutions, approve and authorize payments of accounts payable October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Miss Smith.
This was removed from the consent agenda because it contains an invoice to try and plumbing for a hundred and twenty dollars for backflow testing. We would like to do a roll call vote.
Questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion. Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Farenbacher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ikorst?
Yes.
Councilman Iyer?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an application for permit to sell in the city park or recreation areas dog behavior training classes. Ms. Smith Henry.
You know, most of you. So I'm a behavioral trainer. Been doing P T T, no, PTSD training for five years. I do behavioral a little bit more than your average sit, stay, lie down. I'm also a good dog trainer through the AKC. And I've had some private lessons with people who have requested me to come down here since you now have a dog park and maybe do some hour sessions in your dog park. Um, I was unaware. I had to get a permit. I didn't know, so apologies, but I filled that out now and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments?
Do you carry liability insurance?
I make everyone sign a waiver for their own, but yes, I do. And my insurance does cover me on other people's property because I do in-home training as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion. Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is request for fishing tournament and boat permit requirement waivers for the R C H S bass team.
My name's Chad Kuscher, the head coach out here at the high school. Just like the last past two years, we've always brought in an organization called ICAST. It's fishermen from all over the state of Illinois, anywhere from Chicago down from Kedale. You know, we like to have it begin here at on east shore. Um, it'd be a sixty boat field. And also I'm gonna try to bring in another organization with Skid Stoll, Stenanger Federation, which is through the Bass Fed, which is through the Bass Federation. And it's owned by Major League Fishing. I don't know if you guys ever watch the channel, watch M L F. Um, that's who owns it. Um, I'm trying to bring them here too. Um, and that would just be a thirty boat field. The ICAST event would be April eleventh, be a Saturday. And I'm asking to, if we could waive the, um, late sticker fee and have that as a sixty boat field and have, and also waive the sticker fee for the May second, which is also a Saturday. And that'd be a thirty boat field.
And we happened to pass waive the boat fees for these kids as they come in because we have a lot spend the night.
Yep. Yeah, and I will tell you, I appreciate everything you do, Mark. You helped the last two years on that rant.
I've enjoyed it getting all those folks. Questions, comments?
ICAST on four eleven, that's adults?
No, that's kids. That is high school kids, only kids.
All kids.
All kids. Yep. Yeah, I wish, I wish it was, it was, I could go fish to high school again.
How many people do you have volunteer their boats for the kid to use?
They bring their own boats. And they're traveling, they bring their boats, they, they'll bring them from Chicago all the way down.
Okay.
All the way down and, and I would say, oh, anywhere from probably out of the sixty, forty is from out of the area. They're staying within the area.
What do they think of this lake? Do you like it?
Uh, the last, the last, everybody that's came out here says we put on a really good showing. They love the town. And, you know, even the, even the guy that runs it says, this is how everything should be ran. It's running smooth, so, yes, they love the lake.
And then they also go to Newton the day after.
Day after, yes. Yeah. So they'll actually be here two days, you know, actually probably three days for, because they actually pre-fish the first day.
Questions, comments?
In our notes here from the city manager, it seems that there may have been some documentation that was incomplete. Do we know what specifically that would be and would it be remedied this year? Do we know what that is? Alan, Chelsea?
Um, yes, it's been reviewed. The application forms, some of them aren't filled out completely, like with, um, type of boat, state registration number, insurance information.
I'll take the blame for that.
Would that be a problem with having that information fully documented on the application?
Yeah, we'll see what we can get done. It's, it's usually about four thirty, five o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're doing flashlights.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion. Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is resolution to authorize an amendment to the contract for sale or real estate between the city of Only and Ayr's executives, administrators, and assignees of Frank F. Miller and Wilma M. Miller.
So in the original contract under section four, uh, it mentions in there, uh, to allow the sellers, at the time, my grandfather Frank Miller, to erect a boathouse dock here along the shoreline, provided that all private, uh, boat, beers, or docks shall be unenclosed and shall be parallel to the shoreline. It also gives some dimensions saying that it shall not extend any further than, uh, ten feet from the shoreline, which already, uh, the existing dock platform that is there is already twenty feet out and, uh, is not in accordance with the current city ordinance. Uh, we would like to amend this to, uh, a larger structure, uh, to be built there for a boathouse that we'd like to hopefully start this winter or early spring.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have anything to add. It's just a matter of the council. I, I kind of put in some, uh, buffer there. Maybe the language that I use is a couple of feet longer, or a couple of feet larger than they requested, just to, you know, just in case. And, go ahead.
Mr. Bradley, have you reviewed where they would like to place this dock and boathouse?
I no longer do that.
You no longer do that. Ms. Runyon is not here. Do we know, Mayor, or Alan, did she feel that there was any, um, challenge to the existing structure of the, the pumping station there and the aeration pumps? And, you know, the back in that co, how, how close are you to those items?
So to the aeration pumps, we're over two hundred feet. So there's no, there was no issue with that when we came to meet with.
I didn't see exactly where along them say dam, but I didn't see exactly where you, you had that, but oh, two hundred feet?
Yes, and I couldn't give you a distance to the boathouse, but as far or farther, to the pump house, sorry, as far or farther.
Further questions, comments?
Do I understand this right? This is a, this, this is just amending the contract between them and the city. And the city, okay. Not, that's not changing the ordinance as far as, uh, which you can do on the entire place.
They were granted the authority to put a boathouse in, it was just been a very tiny boathouse.
Right. I mean, that's why it's outside the scope of the planning commission where, I mean, it's a, it's a contract that the city, that is in place. It's just amending the contract.
Past councils have, this has been a bit of an issue, boat docks and widths and distances and extensions and the like. However, I, um, you are a bit of an exceptional place, in my opinion, in that the historical document from your grandparents and also that you would be almost an exclusive structure on that part of the, there's nothing else there and it's not a highly trafficked ski area.
And that's why we asked for the slightly outside the ordinance that exists, uh, because we're not impeding any neighbors as far as their line of sight to the lake. Um, and also, uh, being able to see it from our house with the dike and the elevation there, wanting to be able to.
I'm generally in favor of allowing a variance because of, we have a rule, but in your case, I'm, I'm okay with what you are considering. So I would make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Final call for discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda? Call for submissions to the electors of the city of Only, the question of whether the city of Only shall allow cannabis dispensaries within city limits. Mr. Iyer, Mr. Zuber.
Uh, the, the last meeting, the motion, uh, was made and passed to restart the process. And this resolution is the next step in the process. So if three people want, uh, the non-binding, uh, question on the ballot, this is.
Start.
And thi- this is the wording that will appear on the ballot, Mark?
That was the wording, the exact wording that you used, so.
Very good. Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'm still not a fan of the springtime asking of this question at an election that very few people show up to. Although I'm really not in favor on putting it in, on the ballot in general. Based on the hundreds of people I've talked to, and I know you've talked to many people as well, Mr. Iyer.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not afraid to make my decision based on what I'm hearing from many people. You're not gonna get those people, obviously, to come to a council meeting and say, yes, I want a dispensary.
Why not?
Well, why don't you think you would?
So, so by the general consensus psychologically, is it's a little unsightly, uh, practice? And they don't want to be, uh?
I'd say the customers that go to a dispensary will not be shouting it from the rooftops. Well, either, either way, you know, it's a controversial issue.
It is.
And it shouldn't be, not because we're afraid to do, but it shouldn't just be three people and a majority saying to, what's even, even if it's forty-one percent, if it's forty-nine percent, uh, against it and fifty-one percent for it, there needs to be the issue settled by the people because it's controversial.
Well, the fact is, Bryce, that, that three persons will make this determination, but I, with the whole, started this whole ball rolling was, I would like more of the opinion from the, uh, from the, the public as possible, um, to make, to make an informed decision. This is, this is, it could be a, a very impactful, um, situation that, that would be allowed to come into Only. And I believe that the citizens are, are due their say before we make a vote.
Further questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is their second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion. I move to amend the motion by striking March seventeenth and inserting November the third of two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Amendment on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Will this be a problem with the courthouse?
No, because we've not done anything yet. We have to do this all. I mean, this has to be sent over to them.
Alright, so this will be another seven, seven months down the road. I would like to make another caveat to your caveat, that no dispensary would be allowed to come into Only before that time.
That would not be an appropriate amendment to the amendment. You cannot change the, um, the intention of the amendment. After this amendment is either struck down or not, then we can move on that issue.
I think, I think March is just fine. People will be engaged. I mean, we, Boston, you had half the town light up with opinions, so I, I, I don't think it's gonna be a low turnout.
We've already been considering this for six weeks, two months now.
Word's out.
Yeah. That's, that's over a year away. I believe that, yes, historically primaries are less, have a less percentage turnout. But if there's a controversial issue, people who are concerned will show up to the polls.
Our school district imposed a sales tax by about a margin of four percent in a low turnout. This is a non-binding referendum, so I don't think it's any more egregious than, than that.
Further comments? Further comments? Call the roll on the amendment.
On your amendment, we will do Councilwoman Ikorst.
This is kind of hard, just in, in some ways. Um, so what is the motion?
So the amendment is to strike, to move it to the November third, two thousand and twenty-six general election from the March seventeenth primary election.
And you're thinking on this, I mean?
There will be more people vote.
I personally think there will be a lot of people going out to vote either for this or against this. So I, I'm not voting for the amendment.
Councilman Iyer?
No.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Farenbacher?
No.
Motion fails. We're now back to discussing the main motion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, call the roll, please.
Now, what are we voting on?
This is to put it on the ballot.
Primary election in March. Advisory.
Let's get it done.
Councilman Farenbacher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ikorst?
Yes.
Councilman Iyer?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
No.
Councilman Miller?
No. Motion passes. Guess we'll get that filed with the, with the clerk. Next item on the agenda, discussion of possible resolution to amend the twenty-five, twenty-six tourism budget for Little League ballpark upgrades. Councilman Miller.
Okay, I promised Mr. Davis that I would meet with him out there and discuss their field drainage issues that they wanted a whole bunch of money to fix. I did go out there, meet with him. I found about ten, I'm gonna say nine fairly minor drainage issues. Uh, Councilwoman Ikorst was present as well. One somewhat major drainage issue. Uh, really, I mean, I could go through every field if you want to, but really what I'm looking for is for you all just to say, yes, it's okay, Councilman Miller, to take Mike Bridges out there, show him all the issues, and have him formulate a plan on how we alleviate it. Because the way I read the lease between city of Only and Little League, we are responsible for groundwork drainage.
Yes.
So we, rather than giving Little League thirty thousand or how mu, however much it is, need to look and see what we need to do. But I would very much prefer to do that with Mr. Bridges and then he could present to us and we could make a long-ish term plan to alleviate all the issues out there. So I don't know if I need to put that to a motion or if it's, I think?
I think if you have a consensus, I think we can have Mr. Bridges go ahead and work with you to figure out something.
Okay, then I will meet Mr. Bridges out there. We will walk the.
Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Under the facility.
Yes.
Sounds like a plan. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to authorize the sale of items of personal property owned by the city of Only and S M C I crack sealer. Mr. Berger.
This is a, a crack sealer, as my understanding has been in the city's ownership for quite some time, long before anybody that's been here, uh, in the, uh, street department. So for scrap metal.
Last time it was used was probably in two thousand and nine.
Do you think we can sell it?
I don't think it's worth selling. It was used when we got it. It was used while we had it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to sell that thing.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing that, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is resolution except quote for light fixtures at the tennis court complex and wait formal bidding. Mr. Berger.
I'd like to call on Mr. Bradley. He's, uh, present tonight and he can, uh, give more details of, about that than I can.
Yes, we're looking at replacing the twenty-four light fixtures there at the tennis court with new LED lights, going from fifteen hundred watts to five hundred watt fixtures. So, um, I have two quotes, low quote from, let me get this right, Eckert Supply for fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Have we used them before? Have we worked with them before?
Um, they'll be the exact same lights as what we put on diamonds number one through four out there at the ballpark, except these are slip fitters. It's just a different mounting mechanism.
Those will be nice and.
And it would be the same, it's the same price as what we paid last year for the same fixtures, so.
Questions, comments?
This apples to apples on the two quotes.
Yes, exact same fixtures, yes.
Alright, if you're confident in Eckert, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve their bid of fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second?
It's, I'll second it since I made it just right before you did it.
I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear you.
Some hearing gains.
You gotta yell at me.
I will.
Any further discussion? Further discussion?
You said, you said, uh, take it down from fifteen hundred to five hundred.
Correct, yes.
So they'll pay for themselves over the long run.
They will, and we're also eligible for a hammer incentive on that as well.
Oh, nice.
Further discussion?
It's, I figured twenty-four hundred dollars, so.
Tennis courts look great, you guys, and the street department did a great job of it.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Further, seeing that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to amend the twenty-five, twenty-six street department and park cemetery department budgets. Mr. Berger.
And I would, uh, defer to, uh, Ms. Quinn on this on the budget amendments.
So the first one, we talked about, um, extending the fence at the Musgrove Park and somebody has came forward to donate that seventy-two hundred dollars. So this amends the budget for that donation and then for the expense for that playground. The second one, we have the ITEP grant to redo the downtown in Only. I did not budget anything for that this year, but we do have some invoices from Charleston Engineering to pay this year for that. So I'd like to go ahead and put a hundred thousand in the budget to cover that and whatever else we may have this year. That grant is a reimbursable grant, so we are paying for those expenses out of our general fund. And then at some point, we will get reimbursed from IDOT for those.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
The, um, the fence, has Mr. Cl, uh, Mr. Oaks, um, I don't know if anybody knows, but Mr. Cletus Oaks has been generous and gave us this donation for the fence. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. He was very generous on that. Um, does this, I'm just wanting to make sure this fully encompasses everything and it puts gates on it?
Is that correct?
With the park fence?
That's my understanding.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes.
Two gates across the side, lock one double gate. That's all I understood.
Very good. Any, any further? Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion. Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda? Is discussion of possible action consideration of soccer field complex location? Soccer clubs. Mr. Khan.
Hello, everybody. I'm Luke Khan and I'm the current president of Richland County Soccer Association. So for the last forty years, we've been providing youth soccer in Only, Richland County. Uh, for those last forty-plus years, we have been at Only Central College. The college now plans to get a men's and women's soccer program. So that is going to kick us out of our location. We've worked with them for forty-plus years. They've been nice enough to let us use that land for free. But now we are needing some help to find some new land. We need, um, ideally, we'd like about fifteen acres. That would get us four U-ten fields, three U-twelve fields, and two U-fourteen or U-eighteen fields. If we had to, we could go down to, and a two acre parking lot. Uh, if we could, if we had to, we could go down to twelve acres. That would still give us four U-ten and three U-twelve fields and a two acre parking lot. We have about three hundred and fifty to four hundred kids. We have a year play soccer. And, uh, the nice thing is I am a licensed professional civil engineer. So if you guys have any areas that you would, different land at the Only, we could work with the city with, I can design and draw up different locations and help in any way possible.
Questions, comments?
Uh, has anybody looked at Musgrove Park? I, I don't think it'd be very likely we'd get nine fields.
So I looked at Musgrove. We can fit three U-ten and three U-twelve fields. One of those U-ten fields would have to be in the outfield of the big, the bigger field, which our main season is fall and I know the middle school team plays there and they have tournaments throughout, then the local leagues have tournaments throughout the weekends and we use those fields pretty much every single night throughout the fall and every Saturday and hit or miss some Sundays. So that would be a logistical thing. If we had to, I mean, right now we're beggars, so we can't be choosers. So if we had to go there, we could, we could make it work, but it would be tight and we'd have to look out and work with the city on logistical things between the middle school practicing and playing there and us being there as well.
If you had to do it, you'd have, do you restate that? If you had, if you had that location, that was the only one you have?
Yeah, we could make it work. It'd be tight, but we could make it work if we had to. If not, the only other alternative is we might lose youth soccer in Only for three hundred and fifty to four hundred kids, so, yeah.
We talked in the southeast portion of Musgrove Park, their, their last remaining open area. And we have discussed this at past councils, where you and Councilman Ikorst were on here. And part of the parks, um, wasn't a charter, but it was certainly a, uh, it wa, it was a committee that reviewed the conditions of, of Musgrove Park and what was gonna go there and part of the conditions were that they remained open area. That's why I know with pickleball, they wanted to kind of come up in that area, but then they went to the, to the southwest corner to leave that open, open area. So I know, I would hate to squander that open area even for, for a less than ideal soccer field, if, if there's any other possible area.
I'm not in disagreement. It would be more untradable to me to think three, four hundred children, kids, you know, I played when I was young, to not have a soccer youth league. You know, I'm open to other options. If this is not the one we want to go with, if Musgrove's not what we want to go with, I'm open to talking about it.
What are some of the ideas?
Um, there is an area that we have looked at that is, let's see, my direction's straight, right north of where one thirty meets Whittle. There's already an entrance to those fields on the east side. We would, if we could take fifteen acres, if not, we could make eleven acres. That would give us an entrance right there. That is one possible location we've looked at.
That's.
That's the one off of Whittle?
Yes.
That's our industrial park area, correct?
That is correct.
It's less developed.
I really want to attract an industry there. I want you to get your soccer.
I do.
I want you to get your soccer field. I just, I don't want him there, I'm sorry. I, Musgrove, we can look around. I will, we will all work with you trying to find you a good location. I just don't think the industrial area, because if, well, if we hit him off that fifteen acres, that is the only access currently to an eighty thousand pound road for that entire fifty-two acres. So I want you to have your site. I just don't think that's.
And as I said, we are completely open to work with you guys on different locations and.
Mr. Bridges, is there any environmental concerns that you would think would arise from that Pacific Cycle area in terms of having play?
That would be a concern is the, the waste, the former waste site that was right next to Pacific Cycle. It was cleaned up to a certain level. There was about fifty-six hundred barrels of, uh, some pretty toxic material there. They stored the material, they excavated around the exterior of that. It would, it would be, um, have to look into it, really. It would, that would not be the, I guess, uh, a recommended spot.
Yeah, obviously, we don't want to put our kids in toxic.
If somebody came along and said, you know, I'm right, you got a blank check here. Where would you want to go?
The blank check, the, the Cary Winners Land, west of Silver Street, on the west side of Silver Street, across somewhere they're building the new subdivision. Because it would have, I think it would have great access. It'd be still relatively close to Musgrove Park.
On north, on north of that subdivision?
Just to the west, on the west side. So on the opposite side of the street, sorry.
Immediately west of that subdivision.
West of North Field subdivision.
Does that seem to be as that feasible with them?
We have talked, we have had some talks with them. Their price is pretty high, because we are a nonprofit, and so it's not like we're flush with cash, cash to buy fifteen acres. Uh, we have had some people we've talked to about donations, but the last we talked to them, I don't know if we've ever done official number, but they have some, it's been a pretty large sum, I believe, is what I've told.
So tournaments, uh, you want, you would want to make sure that you're able to host tournaments.
Yeah.
So if we scale it down too much, in the long run, we lose a lot of revenue through losing tourists. That's just, you know, something to keep in mind, so we'll just, that'll, that'll be part of our discussion to make sure that you feel confident that we can be drawing people to town.
Have you talked to the cokers?
I have not. Oh, actually, I have, yes, those cokers I have. They said they, I talked to their sons. They said, yeah, my mom's been offered some things for that, and they'll never sell that land.
I C C, they're, they're starting, when are you, when can you not go back?
So they do not have set plans, but we are good for the twenty-twenty-six fall season. So we're good for next year. We're just trying to be proactive and get the fields done, so in that way, because a lot of these things, you take a year off, you lose a lot of your numbers. So we're trying to be proactive and get this done, because we should still be able to be there for the fall twenty-twenty-six season. Twenty-twenty-seven is when it's not looking very good.
I could come back to the Cary Winners Fund. Wasn't part, I mean, it's part of the whole establishment of her fund was to pro, to support youth activities, is it not?
But I think part of what supports youth activities is probably the farming of that land, so you're going to have to replace that for perpetuity.
So you use the generational income from farming to support, rather than just directly.
Because I think that was part of it. If we were to buy that land, they would use that money then to buy new land, because they use that revenue to then give out the scholarships or.
But that's still a possibility.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, yes.
And I don't mean to take your property, but just south, just south of what we're talking about on, uh, South Whittle, the old, I always call it the Allegiant softball fields out there, which is now your fire. How big of an area is that out there?
It's pretty large.
Do you use all of that area?
We are in the process of getting, uh, the University of Illinois to recognize it as a regional site, which would mean there would be more training, maybe more people.
More people coming.
Bring more people to town.
So there may have been room.
Is it inside the park? Restraite area?
That is, that is controlled by the fairground, or by the fair.
Fair board.
So if we go forward with a not, no, not that spot, what's your next step? Are you going to start fundraising, do or do you not?
So it's kind of, I don't know. We're kind of still in that beginning stages of, I don't want to start fundraising, getting money from people without having a set location and taking money that I don't know if I can spend. I, that means it can feel kind of dirty. But, so I'd rather try to kind of narrow down, or at least have an idea of locations, and then start really fundraising.
And you need eleven to fifteen acres?
Yes. Or, sorry, I did say eleven acres. I, I meant twelve. I apologize. Twelve to fifteen.
And the place north of Musgrove Park is that size?
Yes. They have more than that, but, uh, we would probably, since I'm not trying to buy extra land around it, just get what we needed.
Who owns the ground on North East Street between Cirque and subdivision and the dog park? To the, to the east side of the new subdivision?
Doug Walker.
Yeah. Has, has he been approached?
I am not sure off the top of my head.
It's a large area. It's flat.
I, I do not think, I, I haven't personally reached out to him. I'm not sure if that land has been reached out.
What about the side of the old Weber Clinic? How large is that? That's a pretty good chunk of ground, too, right there. It's just been leveled.
I think that, I, I believe, Cep does have plans for that.
Do you think?
Now, I don't know how quickly they're going to come to fruition, but they do have plans.
Because I'd heard that their plans involve maybe going on east behind, uh, Brookstone.
I think it would take almost all of that area.
Just brainstorm. It's the first I've really heard of this, so.
And yeah, as I said, I'm open to suggestions, so if you think of any land the city owns, any land that people might be willing to sell or donate or anything, I am all ears and going to work with whoever, whenever, however.
Do you, uh, how much money are you able to put into this right now?
So, as we stand, we have been donated, someone has donated seventy-five thousand dollars to us. We believe the total, again, as long as we get a pretty suitable, I'm not looking, set of land, we think it would cost around two hundred thousand dollars by time you do the land work, a little bit of tiling and seeding. That's what we think it costs at the higher end to do without buying the land. So we've been, so, we have had a very generous donation of seventy-five thousand dollars with the chance of that person adding more, and we think we could fundraise the other things. Um, that person also bought us a automatic GPS field liner, which is gonna cut down our times, uh, doing the fields, but also you can put logos on the fields with that. So our plan would then be to sell advertisements and have that as a way to raise money in the future as well.
Do you have about half enough to buy Cary Winners ground?
I was told about a quarter to a third.
All right, can we look into this?
Yeah, yeah. Nothing needs to be set in stone tonight. I just wanted to raise your guys' awareness and start a dialogue and start working together on this.
Well, should we at least signal that that particular property is not what we want? We would, what, where we want to do, because we have a resolution for it. Can we just go ahead and vote on it and say, no, not, not that one?
It can die for a lack of a motion.
Yeah.
Unless anybody wants to make that motion?
I would prefer it up by Musgrove.
I would agree.
All right, let's work on it, see what we have.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to accept renewal proposals for liability, property, workers' compensation, auto, and miscellaneous coverage for two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Berger.
And this is our renewal that, uh, Kelsey put together, a proposal, or their proposal, and she can review it, I think, prepare to review it.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
No, I don't have anything more to say other than what's in the memo, so it's increasing about five percent, which is actually really, um, kind of under the mark where we thought the renewals were gonna hit. Um, I'll say my, my property insurance alone is increasing almost twenty-seven percent, and in autos, I think like eighteen percent. So, um, we're quite pleased, and we thought workers' comp was really gonna drive it this year, so we're looking good.
Excellent.
Questions, comments? Question, comments? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Further discussion. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, report from elected and appointed official status report. Mr. Berger.
The only thing I'll have is, uh, things that we've heard repeatedly about CSX and the bridge construction. They have contacted, CSX has contacted our contractors for those two projects and expressed that they're willing to work with our contractors now and try to come to a solution, uh, once again. Hope to see that moving forward.
Any comments? Questions, comments for the city manager? R C D C report, this gentleman is not here today. Chamber of Commerce report.
A couple different things. Ladies Night is sold out, so if you did not get your tickets, mm, sorry, wait till next year. Uh, we also, uh, Wednesday is National Chamber, and they will have pork burgers and hot dogs from eleven to one Wednesday.
Where?
At the Chamber.
At the Chamber.
Mm-hmm, and also the Halloween parade is coming up, and very soon, in two weeks, I believe. And there will be, uh, it's also a Fifth Friday, so there will be a lot of things going on downtown. Please come out.
No Tourism Board report? Anything else from anybody table? I would accept a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the sale or lease price of real property, acquisition of real property, appointment, employment compensation, performance of specific employees, and litigation matters. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.